I'd like to call our Council, City Council Committee, the whole meeting for June 20th, 2018, to order. At this time for our moment of silence, two things. One is we're getting a lot of rain now, which we need. It continues to remind us of our life on the Mississippi River. But in addition to that, I've had an opportunity recently to, in two different ventures, and fortunately, these trips were covered by the organizations that we were representing, the cost, but with the Association for Defense Communities in DC, and talking about the connection that we all have to have with the communities, the arsenals and depots and installations throughout the country, and how this community was so well represented and recognized for the great relationship we have with our military. But also on a recent trip that we were able to get for the, on the battlefields at Gettysburg, a tour, and you think about the situations where our military charge very challenging locations, and many of them knowing that they probably won't survive, but yet they go anyway. And we can, understanding those opportunities and meeting some of the men and women, how lucky we are and fortunate, we don't, and they don't really, they don't want war, but the fact is they're willing to make the ultimate sacrifice to help diplomacy and information technology and income-related issues as good diplomatic tools, but they're ready to stand the watch for us. So with that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Klow, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Oh, Mayor, Mayor, maybe quickly before we get started with that, there is a tornado on the ground, and so the police chief and the fire chief of us, that we go ahead and at this point go to the basement of the building?
Okay, let's do that. We will. We're going to re-adjourn, and I'd ask now, Alderman Klow, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a quick, an update, there's been, there's obviously a lot of water on the roads, no noticeable damage at this point, but we'll wait for updates and keep you all informed as we proceed. So thank you both to our police and fire chiefs for your vigilance, and I know the great work that you will do. Jackie, or in this case Tiffany, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Matson.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Klow.
Here.
Tompkins.
Done.
Here.
Eight present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during the standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So thank you all very much for being here. Is there, in our city administrator's absence, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll move on. We have four public hearings this evening. First is in community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, we have four public hearings for community development this evening. I will start with public hearing number one. I open the public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the following properties, E6, 643 E6 Street, 634 E6 Street, and 646 E6 Street, and we are going to bring up a couple of the homeowners, Mary Rothan and Roger Ledoux, and we're going to let them come up to the lectern and say a couple of words. They're being conveyed homes through the Urban Homestead Program. This is a really great way to start our evening, and please step up and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Mary Rothan. I'm a Davenport school teacher here in town at West High School. Teach special at it this time.
I'm Roger Ledoux, and I work for a health insurance company, and I also have a small business of my own, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you both, and this is a great program who are going to people who live and work in Davenport, and thank you for choosing to live in Davenport and being business owners and teachers. Congratulations. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two is on the proposed conveyance of 422 Perry Street to Y&amp;J Properties LLC, Joe Aaronberger, the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three is for the ordinance amending various sections of the Davenport Municipal Code to bring uniformity to the process of licensing and permitting for right-of-way encroachments. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number four is going to be postponed until July 3rd, but we will discuss this on our community development agenda within that meeting, and then we, the public will be able to comment there, and you'll also have your time to comment on the public hearing on July 3rd. Mr. Warner, is that sufficient?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Your Honor, that concludes the public hearings for community development this evening.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp. Just as a point of reference for everyone, we have a public hearing. It's publicly announced, so people know what we're doing. It's another sense that we have total transparency. You're going to find some of these items after the public hearing show up again in the actual committee reports that you'll see later in the meeting today. So we're going to move forward. There are no presentations for tonight's meeting. Are there any petitions or communications from any of our council members? And Alderman Dickman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This Saturday is coming up, the event that I've been working on with Treasure Box. It's a local nonprofit. At 5:00 or so, the address is at Beyond the Baseline. It's 1540 West 12th Street. At 5:00, we're going to be having the Reflex Dance troupe performing, which is really cool if you haven't seen them, and then at 6:00 PM, they will be showing the film The Mask You Live In, which is about negative environmental expectations that might lead to violence or criminal behavior, and going to be having a short discussion afterwards with the youth about steps that they can take to make better choices. So definitely encourage any young people you know to come check it out and be part of it. There's going to be free food, some prizes, and we're also going to be giving away professional mentoring experiences at the conclusion of the night, including half a day with the mayor. So whoever wins that is going to be pretty lucky, right? But seriously, hopefully it won't be downpouring, downpouring that day, and really excited to see hopefully a big turnout at the community. Oh, and don't forget the most excite, well, one of the most exciting parts, the owner of the River Bandits has donated 250 tickets for the first 250 registrants, who will also then get armbands for that Monday's game for doing some unlimited rides, so really cool. And I will pass it on to the next person.
Thank you very much, and thank you for those cheers when that mentoring opportunity came up. Well, no, we didn't hear any, did we? I just wanted to mention very quickly, on a serious note, as you know, last week we had our first youth community action summit. That was the first step in a process. So we're reaching out and asking everyone in the community to contact either my office and Nevada Limkey, who's my assistant, or Sarah Ott, who's our director, the assistant director to the city administrator. Either one of us can help, all of us can help put groups together, because we want to reach out and hear the community's involvement related to some of the challenges of our youth, and then work together over the next month, coming forward with some ideas that everyone has a place, a place to play and opportunity to participate in this important work. So with that, I don't see any other involvements this evening. We're going to move on, as we talked about before, of action items for discussion, for discussion. The first area to be discussed tonight is community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion, and Alderman Klow will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 13 items on the community development agenda this evening. It is a very busy slate, which is good. We see a lot of development around town, and business is good in Davenport. So let's get started with item number one, a third consideration, ordinance for case number ORD 18-01, amending title 17.41 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning, HCOD Highway Corridor Overlay District and Elmore Corners Overlay District by creating an Elmore Corners Overlay District and design standards. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward.
Mr. Chair, Your Honor. My name is Candy Pasternak. I reside in the 6th Ward. I work in the 3rd Ward, and I've been a resident of Davenport for quite some time. I am here to speak on behalf of the planning and zoning recommendation to this council as to the Elmore Corners Overlay District as presented and recommended by planning and zoning. Our city is fortunate to have a division of tasks and responsibilities, and to the Planning and Zoning Commission is charged the mission of following Davenport's comprehensive plan and understanding the ins and outs of the zoning requirements and the changes that would take place. With that as the backdrop, planning and zoning recommended to this council that the Elmore Corners Overlay District does not include the THF parcel. We've talked in the past at previous committee of the whole meetings and other meetings as to the rationale for that, and we are wholly in support of planning and zoning's recommendation. I have heard through communications, some of the concerns deals with the expenditures toward infrastructure that has been the expense of the city. And one thing I'd like to point out to you folks tonight is the fact that that expense, when it came to the THF development that encompasses Walmart, Dick's, Field and Stream, THF contributed more than $4.2 million toward the infrastructure in completing that development. It is a highway corridor overlay district. It already has significant, significant design requirements and restrictions. It has those design requirements and restrictions that THF has complied with for the last 17-plus years, which we've discussed in the past, and they have a vested interest, and there's case law that suggests that, there's, they have a vested interest in the fact that they've relied on those restrictions, those design requirements, and to now suggest that this council may not follow the recommendation of planning and zoning and impose additional restrictions, which we've discussed, and it was also discussed well then at that point in time, if you wanting to come in and you can't meet those requirements because of covenants with the other tenants at the development, then you could come in for a variance. Again, in a variance situation, it can't be a hardship of our own making. So in essence, by imposing additional restrictions, if we try to go in and put something in and follow the suggestion that go ahead and apply for a variance, the problem is, one, it may not be guaranteed, because it's not a hardship that wasn't of our making, we're putting something in that doesn't match your Elmore Corners Overlay District, but two, as much as all of us would like to maintain our positions, there's no guarantee that the council that hears this presentation, this ordinance amendment, is going to be the same council that will be here to listen to any application for a variance. So at that point in time, the fact that that is a potential that exists, that in and of itself creates additional expense and work and hardship on the developer. So because we have committed more than $43 million over the course of the time of our development, more than $4,227,775.97 towards infrastructure expenses, we believe that
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Clul?
This is, this is an issue that I've been thinking about for a long time, and I appreciate Attorney Pasternak's comments the last several meetings and Mr. Jaggers before that. I, I plan to offer a motion next meeting to amend to include the THF properties. My rationale is, is essentially that I believe that over a period of eighteen years, it's an expectation that things have changed, that, that, that Davenport is changing, Davenport is growing. The money that the, the, that the council has put forward towards the roads out in the Elmore Coroner's area is significant. So I think it's reasonable to believe, reasonable to believe that over time there would be additional requirements placed on those, those occupants of that area. So again, I, I, I do appreciate the comments, and THF has been a good neighbor. There is no doubt about that. But I believe that due to the circumstances, due to the change in time, the commitment of the city for a vision into the future, that the best thing to do would be to include THF in this resolution. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think that's a horrible message to send business in our community, particularly one that for seventeen years has been an outstanding business partner with the city of Davenport. And has been the economic engine to billions of dollars of economic impact and construction to our great city. And you know, when government starts to overregulate businesses, it sends a very negative message. And they made a very compelling case why they request that. The zoning commission supports it, and now we have an alderman, probably several alderpeople, willing to support that. And, you know, for the last several years, I worked with many great aldermen and mayors that have, have worked incredibly hard to make Davenport's reputation as very pro-business. We work with our businesses, we embrace our businesses. Our city expands because of businesses and jobs. And for having a tremendous business partner, asking the council to leave them off an overregulated demand, and then to turn your back on them, I think it's shameful. And if that happens, you know, I'm not going to support it. I'll be very, and I know the community would be very disappointed that this council did that, particularly the chamber. Thanks.
Alderwoman Rossen?
Thank you, Chair. So I'll comment. So I thought a lot about this, and I'm usually a, a big proponent of raising the bar for everyone. But when I look at this particular situation, I actually tend to agree with Planning and Zoning, just simply because the THF development property has done a very good job out there. If anyone's been out there, it's very professional looking. And I cannot, I mean, I don't see a scenario where if we have other development there that for some reason THF all of a sudden is going to be putting in a building or a structure that's going to be unpleasant to the eye or something out of alignment with the rest of the development that's in the area. I would think they would step up and, and continue their professional level of, of building and, and culling businesses to be in their development park. And I actually agree with Alderman Ambrose, which is, that's a once-in-a-lifetime. Hope you all recorded that event. But yeah, for me, the time and energy on this, I'd rather spend it on raising the bar for developments and new business that goes in, particularly south of Locust, where we have a lot of haphazard things happening. I'd like to see the same level of attention being given to some of our older neighborhoods that we give to Elmore Corners. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Seeing no one, I'll make a couple of brief comments before we move on. You know, I don't see this as, as anti-business. When you subsidize an area as much as Elmore was subsidized to make it go out to where it does, I think we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that we are getting our money back on that and that we are building a place that is going to generate tax revenue enough to end up paying back the, the money that the taxpayers put into the infrastructure out there. I think we need to get away from creating places with humongous parking lots in front of them, buildings that cannot be reused or repurposed. I think that we need to have consistency on that corridor. And I don't think the burden is that high. I, I agree with Alderman Rossen. I don't think that THF is going to put places there that, that don't fit. But I also don't think it's that much to ask them to, to go the extra length to make sure that when you're driving north on Elmore, all of a sudden you look and go, I'm in a place right now. This was planned, this didn't just happen. And, and that's kind of the look that I'm going for. So, you know, I look forward to continuing this conversation next week, and we'll, we'll see where it goes. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you explain subsidizing the developments out there? I'm a little confused.
Typically, in a development, the infrastructure is paid for by the developer. That, North Elmore was paid for with tax dollars. That would be an infrastructure subsidy to a developer, I believe.
Tom, can you explain that a little bit? I'm, I must be getting a little feeble.
Certainly. I believe what the chair is saying is that the casino assessed value, created a TIF, and money off that TIF from the casino was used to pay for the road construction out there, and therefore there's a subsidy on that Elmore Drive.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about Walmart, THF. I don't see any, did you subsidize that infrastructure? We just heard that.
There was a TIF out there. We can go back and check.
Who does a TIF?
For infrastructure.
Is that a?
Or whether THF put it.
Is that a council?
Yes, sir.
Yes. It's not the developer, it's the council's decision to do a TIF. You know, they've just finished building, or they're in the process of putting in stop signs out there or stoplights that were part of the agreement, which are going to have a tremendous impact to that area. So like I said earlier, past councils, past mayors worked very hard to make our economy, the city of Davenport, stronger than it's ever been. And then I'm really concerned when we don't listen to one of our great economic partners.
Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance for case number REZ eighteen dash zero four, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone thirty-three point one-one acres, more or less of property located east of Jersey Meadows subdivision and north of East Fifty-third Street from A-one Agricultural District to R-two Low Density Residential District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. My name's Adam Seitz. I'm with Advance Homes, and we're the petitioners for Pheasant Creek LLC. We're at forty-two fifteen E-sixty Street in Davenport. I just want to start out by saying thank you for your time and consideration on our rezoning and proposed development in the city of Davenport. During multiple public readings, recommendations from city staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a vote of nine no from your governing body, we have appreciated the diplomatic process that has taken place here. We're here to answer any questions or concerns from staff, council, or neighbors that are necessary. Once again, we want to thank you guys for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a second consideration ordinance for case number REZ eighteen dash zero five, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone seven point four-one acres, more or less of property located west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek from A-one Agricultural District to PDD Plan Development District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number four is a first consideration ordinance amending various sections of the Davenport Municipal Code to bring uniformity to the process of licensing and permitting for right-of-way encroachments. Before I open it up to the public, could I ask Ryan Rusnick to come up and explain this consideration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ryan Rusnick with Community Planning. An encroachment is an object or structure that extends over onto or underneath the city right-of-way. These can be outdoor seating areas, marquees, those types of things that actually extend out into the right-of-way. What we found in our ordinance with the Design Review Board ordinance and other sections of the city code, there were conflicts. For instance, the Design Review Board ordinance grants the Design Review Board the authority to grant encroachment permits in the downtown. I think that was creating some confusion because the Design Review Board would approve a design, what we thought was a design, and then an outdoor seating area, for example, would, would show up in the city right-of-way without permitting through Public Works. So we, we, we seek to clarify that the Design Review Board is advisory, clarify what the process is for an encroachment. And, and really, what we do is, is divide these, this process into two ways. One is that if you're occupying the physical right-of-way and there's a direct benefit to a business such as an outdoor seating area, it would come to you as a council for an encroachment license. The majority of these that we would see would be handled through permits. Example would be the nice marquee we saw at the Adler Theater. That doesn't actually occupy the physical space of the ground, but it does encroach that. We would handle that through administrative permitting and, and review it as part of the permit process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I, I do have a comment, and I, I think this is fantastic that we're addressing this. And I hope that the, the council will be accommodating to especially our downtown businesses as we try to get people out on the sidewalks and out on the streets, pedestrians. We're starting to see a lot more restaurants pop up in our downtown. And one of the cool things about restaurants in big cities is that you can have the option to eat outside. I think that this ordinance addresses that and then lays it out. The one question I did have for you, Ryan, is the fee structure. Where did you, how did you come about settling on those fees?
Yeah, so for a license that's granted by city council, we have an application fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. What happens is there's an initial intake from city staff. There's a review. The Design Review Board reviews the design of it, and then it's forwarded to city council for review and approval. And then ultimately, a license is negotiated with the city attorney and, and granted by city council. There would be a, an annual license fee depending on the amount of space that you occupy on city right-of-way. And so that fee would, there would be an annual fee beginning in January first for that occupation. The administrative permit is fifty dollars. And again, that could be reviewed as part of the permit process. We would not charge for things like decorative flower pots or decorative tables and chairs that are really just street furniture that are, that is really no, you know, direct economic business impact for that business.
What about the businesses that currently have patio seating on, on right-of-way? Are they grandfathered in, or they need to go through the process the first time?
So we wouldn't, if they, assuming they don't have a license, we wouldn't make them go through the initial permit process. We would make them essentially go through the, what we would call the annual license. So basically, any business that would come in, come in January first, we would come in, make sure we have them documented. It's, it's important that we, we have these things documented and that they have insurance for being out in the city right-of-way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number five is a first consideration ordinance for case ORD eighteen dash zero two, amending title seventeen to incorporate a zoning component to promote and create a commercial identity for the Rockingham Road Corridor through design and use standards. This text amendment, amendment will include a map amendment for the area along Rockingham Road from John Fell Drive in the southwest and to Marquette Street in the northeast portion of the corridor. City of Davenport is the petitioner. Chapter seventeen point six zero of the Davenport Municipal Code allows for text and map amendments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Dunn?
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to thank staff and the stakeholder group for all the hard work they've done on this project. It's really going to be exciting to see where this ends up. Thanks.
And just as a reminder, this is the item where we've moved the public hearing to July third. So seeing no one else from council, this item will move on. Item number three is the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to convey the following properties, six forty-three E-sixth Street to Olivia Aguilera, six thirty-four E-sixth Street to Roger Ledoux, six forty-six E-sixth Street to Mary Rothan. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of vacated public right-of-way, those being parts of College, Lombard, Dennison, and a public alley abutting the Genesis East Campus. Genesis Health System is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution authoring, authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to convey the property at four twenty-two Perry Street to Y and J Properties LLC. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Certified Local Government National Register Nomination Evaluation Report Form for sixteen oh six Brady Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I would note this is the current school district administration center, and they former, correct, former, which is, which is going to be a, a Newbury Living property. And they need this resolution so that they can apply for some historic grants. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number ten is a resolution for case number F eighteen dash zero four, request of Pine Partners LLC.
I need to abstain from this item.
Okay. Noted. Thank you. Resolution for case number F eighteen zero four, request of Pine Partners LLC for final plat Wedgewood tenth addition on point nine-two acres, more or less located west of North Division Street at the fifty-six hundred and fifty-seven hundred blocks, which is proposed to contain four lots. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on, noting that Alderman Condon abstained. Item number eleven is a motion to set a public hearing for the purpose of amending the urban revitalization area plans for the central city and north urban revitalization areas. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item twelve, motion amending the annual action plan for year forty-four for the CDBG and home programs, the revised citizen participation plan, and the updated CAC recommendations for CDBG allocations. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item thirteen is a motion authorizing staff to notify the Department of Housing and Urban Development of its intent to allocate two point six million to its community development block grant line of credit that can be utilized for various eligible projects, including those consistent with urban revitalization. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. I would ask Alderman Clul to set the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Gripp. I, I move that items one-
I I move that items one, two, three, and five be moved forward to discussion. Items four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen to consent.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor, that concludes Community Development this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Just as a point again, for those watching very quickly, you see first, second, third considerations, that each one of those is a two-week process, each consideration. So, anything we do that creates actually an ordinance takes six weeks, so everyone has plenty of an opportunity to participate. So, just keeping you informed of that. When they say this will move on, that means next week, if there's not a discussion, it'll be approved on the consent agenda. The other items will have more discussion, so just to clarify that. Our second area to be discussed this evening is public safety. Alderman Rossin will lead the discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. First item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule fourteen of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Intersection Traffic Signals by Adding Division Street at Seventy-Sixth Street. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number two, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule eight of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Thirty-Minute Parking by Adding Main Street along the east side from Second Street North to the alley. Anyone from the public would like to comment? Anyone from council? Oh, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With no protests, I suggest we suspend the rules and pass this on the second consideration.
Okay, there's been a motion to suspend, suspend the rules. You have a...
Just to note it for next week, but yeah.
Okay.
A motion and a second?
I would second.
Okay. Thank you. Moving, item number three, I'm gonna read, oh, sorry.
You need a vote.
Oh, do we need a voice vote, or just a...
Voice vote is fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign?
No.
Very good, thank you. Item number three, I'll read all of these together. Resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates. Seven G Distributing LLC, thirty-two hundred Research Parkway, July seventh, twenty eighteen, from twelve PM to five PM. Closure location will be Research Parkway from Research Drive to Hillendale. One lane to overflow, one lane for overflow parking. Barrel House, two eleven East Second Street, Bix Celebration, July twenty-sixth to twenty-ninth, three PM to one AM. Closure location will be East Second Street between Perry and Pershing. Me and Billy's, two hundred West Third Street for the Bix Celebration, July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, seven AM to eight AM. Closure location, West Third Street between Main and Harrison in front of two hundred West Third Street. The Office, one sixteen West Third Street for the Bix Celebration, July twenty-eighth through the twenty-ninth, eight AM to two AM. Closure location will be West Third between Brady and Main Streets in front of one one six West Third Street. Anyone from the public have comments on any of those items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those items will move on. Section four. Motion approving the special occurrence permit for Max Tavern to allow a food truck to operate outside their premise on the public right-of-way Monday through Thursday, ten PM to two AM, and Friday and Saturday from ten PM to two AM. Any commentary from the public? From council? This item will move on. Section five, I'll read all these together. Motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. Circle Tap, thirteen forty-five West Locust Street, Wheeler Wedding, July sixth, twenty eighteen, eight PM to twelve AM, over fifty DBA. Damview Inn, four ten E Second Street, Bix Party, July twenty-seventh through the twenty-eighth, seven AM to twelve AM, over fifty DBA. Barrel House, two eleven East Second Street, Bix Bash, July twenty-eighth through the twenty-ninth, eight AM to one AM, over fifty DBA. Me and Billy, two hundred West Third Street for the Bix Party, July twenty-eighth through the twenty-ninth, nine AM to two AM, over fifty DBA. And finally, The Office, one sixteen West Third Street, Bix Party, July twenty-eighth through twenty-ninth, eight AM to two AM, over fifty DBA. Any comments from the public on any of these items? Anyone from council? Alderman Kuhl.
Thank you. Just a curiosity on my part, the DBA over fifty. It seems to me that that normally, if you were going to establish a standard, you would say under fifty DBA. This is over. I'm just wondering, does that provide adequate, I mean, what what kind of control does that provide for noise?
Right. The reason it's written that way is because there's a maximum limit, and it's saying you can go over the maximum, the normal maximum limit of fifty DBA. There is a question about whether we should put a super maximum on these that's been raised over the years. That's something, it's not easy to pin down as a decibel reading, but we certainly could draft you something if council's interested.
I would appreciate seeing that.
So, just for clarification, Alderman Kuhl, was it something below for a specific, below fifty DBA?
No, nothing specific. I'm just thinking in terms of a standard saying that you're going to, you're going to restrict sounds to over fifty. Does that then mean that we will restrict anything over fifty DBA you would restrict?
So, I believe what Alderman Kuhl's saying is, we're saying you can go over the normal limit of fifty DBA, but we're not placing an upper range on that. So, we're not putting on there a hundred DBA or a hundred and twenty DBA, for instance. And that is, if you look through the literature, it's difficult to pin down exactly where that should be, but we can provide a recommendation and ordinance.
Yeah, I guess I've, I guess most events that we have are noy, I mean, can be noisy, but at what level is a hundred DBA? I mean, what would that sound like?
There's all kinds of charts that usually relate to a rock concert or a jet airplane taking off. If if you're curious, look on the internet, you can see those. But they all disagree about where damage begins. There's a little bit of a controversy. So, as that ordinance would come forward, you all would have to figure out where you would like to set that.
Yeah, that'll be an interesting discussion, because I hear the bands from downtown at my house, and I don't live downtown.
My guess is if you asked the police chief if it was very, very loud, they would talk to them about their volume.
Oh, it's a band, and it's the weekend. People are having fun, so I don't worry about it. But, okay, very good. Is there, is there any other, Alderwoman Dickman?
I just wanted to clarify that fifty DBA is actually not very loud at all. I might...
That's correct as well.
I might be exceeding fifty DBA at this very moment. So, just to put that out there for reference, because I did look it up at one point, and I was like, wow, that's, gotta make sure we're, we're talking about the right number when we we set a cap, since I, there, no offense, you know, I don't think there would be any bands that would sound great if they were capped at fifty DBA.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for a quick question.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Are we, are we asking, I just wanted to clarify, are we asking our city attorney to draft something? We had one person kind of talk about it, but just, I think we've, we've set our, our basic operation things. Have we just instructed him to do something, or do we want to leave it at the...
As the chair, I would like to request, can you actually just pull together an email and send out to all of us on exactly the DBA definitions and ranges and what, because I know that I haven't been on the websites in years, but...
I will try to find you a handy-dandy graphic.
Yeah, because that might help to put that in perspective before we, you spend time doing an ordinance. Thank you. All right, any other, seeing no one else for those items? Last section, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area or location transfer. Mississippi Valley Blues Fest, four hundred West Biderbeck Drive in Leclerc Park, outdoor area, July sixth through seventh, twenty eighteen, for the Blues Fest, license type B beer. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on, and I would ask Alderman Condon to set the agenda.
Mr. Warner, I might need your help on the wording of this. Because number two was suspended, that will not go on the...
A typical motion would be that all items go to consent, other than item two, and item two should be, appear on discussion with a notation to suspend the rules.
Thank you. What he said. Is there a second?
Second.
That was official legal business, what he said. So, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign? All right, we're done here, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Alderman, Alderman Rossin and Alderman Condon. Thank you. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, Honor. First item on the discussion is resolution of acceptance for the FY twenty sixteen Contract Sewer Repair Program to Hagerty Earthworks of Muscatine, Iowa. Number two is resolution of acceptance for the FY twenty eighteen Sewer Lightning Program, Phase Two, Municipal Pipe and Tool Company of Hudson, Iowa, the cost of five hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Number three is a resolution approving the contract for the FY twenty nineteen Sewer Lateral Repair and Nuisance Repair Program with six contractors for the total amount of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, authorizing the mayor to sign and manage any related agreements. Number four is a resolution approving the contract for the Davenport Municipal Airport Runway fifteen thirty-three Reconstruction Project from Lineman Construction of Rock Island in Illinois in the amount of six million, seven hundred nine thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents, authorizing the mayor to sign and manage any related agreements. Number five is a resolution of acceptance, accepting a grant from the Iowa Department Transportation and the Federal Transit Administration in the amount of one million, three hundred seventy thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars to provide transportation alternatives during the I seventy-four bridge reconstruction. Do we have someone from staff to briefly explain this and how important it's gonna be next year?
Hello, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director. What this grant is doing is providing for the rehabilitation of four city buses. They're actually in Michigan getting rehabilitated right now, and drive, full-time drivers to operate those buses to create additional links between Iowa and Illinois to make both of our transit systems more accessible once, um, the heaviest start of that, the heaviest part of that construction and congestion begins.
Nicole, explain what we're talking about with the construction and the impact. What's gonna happen, please?
Once the bridge, at some point, the bridge will be down to just head-to-head traffic on one of the, the lengths of the bridge.
This is a seventy-four bridge.
Correct. When that happens, we're just expecting the congestion to increase exponentially, and so we, along with Metro Link, applied for this grant as, and because the bids had come in so favorably from the original bridge construction, they had the funds to make this available to try to help with that, um, traffic flow.
Thanks, Nicole.
Yep.
The seventy-four bridge averages about seventy-five thousand cars a day, so it's gonna have a huge impact to the people going back and forth in the Quad Cities, and this should be a tremendous asset to managing the traffic flow. Number six is a resolution approving a contract for construction management services not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Transload Rail Spur Expansion We're gonna, when it comes time, we're gonna keep this on discussion because we're gonna name the contractor by next Wednesday, and Alderman Dunn will take care of that. Number seven is resolution assessing the cost of boarding of buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number eight is resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number nine is resolution assessing the cost of condemning property demolition of various lots and tracks of real estate. And number ten is resolution assessing the cost of snow removal from sidewalks at various lots and tracks of real estate. Take along with that, when someone in your neighborhood is allowing their property to go unattended, whether it's trash, debris, grass, you know, if you contact the city, we have a process where we'll send an inspector out, so you shouldn't be sitting at home getting angry because your neighbor's not taking care of his property. A simple phone call or an email to the city, we can help you get that addressed, so that's my recommendation. Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
I assure you, first, is there anybody from the public who's interested?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second?
Yeah, I think Alderman Gripp seconded it.
Oh, did you?
We got it, though. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Honor.
Thank you very much. Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our third area to be discussed, or our last area to be discussed, is finance, and in Alderman Tompkins' absence, Alderman McGinnis will lead that discussion.
The first item is a resolution approving the renewal of general and auto liability property and workers' compensation insurance and related professional risk management services for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen with multiple insurance companies in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Anybody from council? This item moves on. The second is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Quad Cities Economic Development Services Agreement with Quad Cities First for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment? Anybody from council? This item moves on. A resolution awarding contracts for vehicle body repair work to a group of body repair companies. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? And anyone from the council? Number four. Motion approving a grant payment to Gabe's Dream Team in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars for construction of an all-inclusive playground in Van Devere Park. And before I ask for comment, I'm gonna ask Scott Hope if he would come and just tell everybody what this is and how long this has been going on and what we're gonna be doing here tonight.
Thank you very much. Scott Hope, Director of Parks and Recreation. So, what we have is we have a group that is out raising funds to build an all-inclusive playground in Van Devere Park, and they have been working at it for several years. They're getting close to their goal. Several years back, the city committed some funds toward their process, because technically, they will be gifting us the playground in the end, but typically, to replace a playground, we're spending anywhere between seventy to eighty thousand dollars to replace a normal playground. The cost of this playground, of course, is much greater, and it's worth it because it provides opportunity for children of all abilities to be able to play and interact, interact together, right? We would love to do more of these playgrounds within the system. All of our playgrounds are ADA accessible, but this takes it a step farther and really gives that play opportunity. But I really want to turn it over to Gloria. Gloria is the founder, president, and accountant, and many other hats that she wears as far as for Gabe's Dream Team. She has been leading the cause and making this happen, and her and her mighty crew have been, Dylan and Jenny, working over these last couple of years, so I'll let Gloria say a few words.
Thank you. On behalf of Gabe's Play Village, we would like to express our appreciation to the council for the support that we've received. It has taken us a little bit, but we, we have visions of breaking ground in the spring of two thousand and nineteen. So, we've, we've got a good chunk of our money already raised, so it won't be long. It won't be long. It's much needed in the city of Davenport, and Gabe is my grandson, and he's our passion behind this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment? And anybody from council? And Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to say thank you to, to Gloria and what you guys are doing, and that's what it takes, is someone who's passionate and relentless, because it wasn't just a few months. This is years in the making, and it's going to happen. It's going to be awesome. It is much needed. I, I hear a lot of people, when is Davenport going to get something like this? And saying, it's in the works, we've got this, and we've got the Miracle Field coming, and thank you for your efforts.
And Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gloria, thanks a lot. You've been very tenacious and consistent in making this happen. I can remember when you first came to the city council, and the council and the mayor back then were very excited, and, you know, to see this happen, and I want to thank Scott for being diligent and a great partner, working with him, so I can't wait.
And, Your Honor?
Yeah, Gloria, I just wanted to add, I know we spent a couple of meetings at various kitchen tables around, around town having these discussions, and this plus the Miracle Field, momentum has, interestingly, slowed a build, but now it's really moving along, and a lot of people are jumping on board, realizing the importance of making sure that every child has an opportunity to join in with their friends to be able to participate. So, again, I want to echo my thanks to you and to all the others that are donating not only their time, but also their... only their time, but also their, their treasures to make this happen. So, thank you, Gloria.
Thank you, Your Honor. And Gloria, I'd like to say, I, I think I was maybe one of the first people who saw this as part of the Historic Preservation Commission when I sat on that commission. So, I, I know it was a big project to do, and it's exciting. You know, we looked at it as part of the Van Devere Park, because it's, the HPC looks at those things. It's a very exciting concept, and I really, congratulations and kudos for how hard you've worked at doing this, so I'm glad to be here tonight to be part of this. So, with that, I would propose that all items move on to the consent agenda. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. All right. So, these items will move on. Then, there are a group of, is purchases of $10,000 to $50,000. They're listed here. These are for information only.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions this evening? Seeing none, are there any public with business this evening? Seeing none, are there any reports of city officials this evening? Seeing none, all in favor, anybody make a motion to adjourn first? Is there a motion and a second? There is? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I did that on purpose, yeah.